Good evening. Today is Tuesday, January 10th, 2023. Study session. We will start with public comments on study session-related items, if there's any public comments.
Mayor, I'll check with Laura downstairs to see if she has anybody present. Laura, do you have anyone present in the police department lobby for comment?
Nope, no comments from the lobby.
Thank you.
Okay, we will start with discussion on Bird scooters.
Thank you, Mayor. On the line we have Nick Mitchell with Bird scooters. So last year, we entered into a contract with Bird scooters to provide another transportation option for residents and visitors. And we had, city received with the cost sharing, $680, so we had approximately, so 6,800 rides registered in the city with a 10 cents per ride. Nick, I don't know, can he hear? Nick, do you want to provide a little overview on the usage?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. So we, we had some pretty good usage. We were pretty happy with it month of the month. We really, over the summer months, June and July, we peaked at about 1,500 rides a month, which was, it was really good usage. And then as the weather started to get colder, the numbers kind of started to dip in August. We had about 900 in September. The numbers started to get cut in half to around 400. And then October and November were pretty minimal as the weather conditions deteriorated. But, you know, over the summer months, we were extremely happy with how things went. And we're happy to keep things moving.
And I mentioned to Nick about kind of wanting, when the scooters are left in the neighborhood, the contract states within three days they'll be picked up, within 24 hours of being notified. So we talked a little bit about improving that. But ultimately, the contract ended December 2022, so it's up to council. What I'm hoping to get tonight is if, direction about if we pursue this another year or, and also answer any questions that council may have or concerns or comments.
What do you mean by notify? Does someone have to call and say that, or is it just a GPS thing saying where it's at?
So you can notify through the app, you can call them, you can also email them. So either it's like a QR code on the Bird scooter. So when I'll, if I see one around that I should be moved, I'll go up to it with the Bird app and scan it and report a badly parked scooter. But there's a couple of different options to report it.
I thought there was a, that mine machine that notified the company that.
So they do, yeah, they, they're able to geolocate them. And so that's, yeah, within three days of them being put somewhere, they should pick them up. But if you're going to report it and want it gone within 24 hours, you can report it.
Is there a way we can move that up to not 24 hours? Because that's been an issue where it's been, they'll be laid out all over the city.
So Nick, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, if that's something that we, we want to look at, we need to definitely look at, you know, improving the language in our agreement to have that, that window tightened a little bit. I'll tell you, we've been in compliance with the 24-hour limits, but most of the time we get these scooters moved within a handful of hours. It's nice just to have, you know, a, a, a bigger window just in case something goes wrong. My guys on the ground are normally pretty good. As we launched the program over the summer, we did see a little bit of lag with the repositioning and their redeployments. Because they were still learning the program, they were still learning the ropes at what, you know, we expect of them. As we got into August and September, we really started to see them tightening up the schedule and the redeployments really kind of moving along. We've addressed any concerns that the, the city and Bill have brought to us with our fleet managers. And we, we feel it's in a comfortable place. You know, moving forward, if we were to relaunch this spring and summer, we're confident that we'd be able to adhere to any timeframe that you guys could put on us.
I'm curious to know whether or not there's been any damage to the scooters during this, this past summer? Or if any of them are permanently lost?
That we did have a little bit of loss. Bill asked me to put together a couple of things for you guys. I'll share my screening real quick and I'll, I'll share that with you. Just what I'm talking about here. So I have a heat map prepared. And on the heat map, you can see on the ride ends, we did have a couple of rides and out in the, out in the lake, which those are unfortunately scooters that we've lost and we had to go out, we had to fish them out of the lake, we had to fish them out of the river and out of the bay. And those are vehicles that were damaged out and we, we unfortunately lost. So we, there has been a little bit of damage, but not nearly as much of vandalism or anything like that. It's actually been pretty manageable numbers and we're not terribly concerned about it.
How many scooters do we actually end up having?
So I have our, we have a cap on the city, but I also have our average number that we have deployed. So I believe our cap is around 50.
Yes.
That we, that we can have on the street at any given time. But our, our average number of scooters deployed per month never really got to the 50. So we may have had 50 on there at one time, but it kind of bounced back and forth. In June, we averaged 43 scooters on the street every day. In July, we averaged 38. August, we averaged 46.
Can you talk about the user requirements for the scooter?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Can you talk about the user requirements for the scooters? I was kind of under the impression there was an age requirement. Could you go through that briefly?
There is an age requirement, yes. So for the, by Michigan state law, it's required that you have to be 18 years or older. And this is also a company-wide policy that we put on in all of the markets that I work in. So you have to prove that you're 18 in order to create an account. And in order to do that, we have you scan some sort of government-issued ID. It can be a student ID, it can be a driver's license, anything that really proves that you're 18 years or older works for us. And then once that's in place, there are regular checks every couple of months that have you go back in and re-scan your ID just to confirm that was your ID and that you are actually 18 years of age.
So one of the questions I have, I guess, with that, and sorry, but I work in schools, so a lot of my students were using them. And I witnessed a lot of kids riding them over the bridge. They're not 18 years old. So I'm assuming they can just take their parents or somebody who is 18, their ID and scan that. Would that be correct?
That is in all likelihood what happened. There, there, a parent provided their ID and a parent provided their credit card for a child they use on their account. This is not the behavior that Bird condones. We actively work to educate against doing this because it does break the state law.
But I don't know, like when I saw them downtown, I don't know that anything was actually like posted, posted, like on that. Like maybe there was a small sign by the scooters, but I guess I'm wondering, like in the grand scheme of things, let's say a minor uses their parent's ID to get on that, and then there's an accident with that. Like is the city at all liable, or do we have a whole harmless clause on that? Like is it a right at your own risk?
There's no way that that could fall back on the city. If anything, that would fall on Bird and that's all completely insured against. It's, you're completely indemnified.
Do you have any idea like the age range of people who used it? Do you have any kind of that, that kind of data?
I don't have that data on hand. Generally speaking, company-wide, our, our average age is around 23 to 24 years old. That, that's company-wide, but I don't know the specifics for Manistee. I apologize.
Were there any accidents reported this year? Any injuries or accidents reported? Chief, do you recall?
I don't know if at first hand, are there any accidents? I've heard a lot near misses. I don't know if any accidents. I've asked for data from our officers. Our concern more, first of all, our ordinance says that doesn't, you don't have to be 18 to ride these things. Our ordinance, which we worked there, city attorney, says that you have to be 14 years old or older if you're in direct supervision. So my concern, just my two cents, is we saw a lot of underage kids, underage, I mean, under 18, which our ordinance allows. But what we found is someone creates an account and the kids use a credit card. And, and so it's really on the police department to really monitor the rules of the company, which has been a little bit challenging. But to go to your point, our officers reported a lot of near misses. I don't have any specific knowledge of scooters. I can go back and get that information and look.
No, I would expect you to have some knowledge if there was someone that got hurt or there's an accident. I don't need to research it.
I don't, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask a question, but is there, is there any path or model where helmets are provided with these Bird scooters? I don't know if I get to ask a question or not.
So we do offer free helmets in the app. There's a, I can send info over to Bill that I can have shared with you guys. It's, you just press one button on the app and then there's a section that says, order a free helmet. And you just put in your address and we will ship you to a helmet. And it only costs you the $5 shipping fee. We, we provide helmets to anybody that asks for them.
Well, there's nothing on the device itself or located nearby?
No, generally speaking, just as lessons learned, best practices, those helmets rarely last longer than a day. If they're attached to the scooter, they, they never give return.
If somebody dumps one in the river, can you track that to a specific user?
If, yes, the scooter does end up in the river, we, we do end up tracking who was the last to use it. And we generally ban those accounts.
Is there a way, like if we?
Part, part of the ride process is at the end of your ride, you have to take an end-of-ride photo to show where you left the scooter. So generally speaking, those are pretty damning when it comes to somebody that did not treat the scooter in, in the way that it should have and, you know, dumped it in the river and created some kind of hazard like that.
So is there a way, I guess I agree with Chief Glass. So I'm a little concerned that the Bird policy is different than our ordinance. And that kind of, I think, is problematic for law enforcement to some degree to enforce. And I guess I have a hard time with if we're going to allow minors to ride a scooter without a helmet. I mean, chances are, I mean, most kids aren't going to preorder their helmet to ride a scooter three days later after it arrives. So I guess I'm just wondering, is there a way we could look at having a helmet stationed somewhere? Like could they check it out from City Hall? I, I, I guess I'm just saying, like, is there a way that we could look at having a helmet stationed somewhere where they could pick up, like pick up the helmet rather than have it shipped directly? Is that something we could look in with the company about having a set number of helmets to begin with?
I'm happy to provide you guys with, you know, a shipment of helmets if you, if you want. And then we can, you know, share that with PD and then we can send out information via our app just to say, hey, if you guys want a free helmet, feel free to contact your local police department. Bird has, you know, already provided them a number of free helmets for you to gain at any time. I'm happy to work with you guys if that's something you'd be interested in setting up.
Well, and I'm not saying that has to go through the police department, so I'm not trying to put more on your plate. I'm just saying, like, it might make more sense if there was a public location to pick up a helmet versus.
I think it would be great to have a helmet available.
Yeah.
For these devices.
The question there would just be a matter of infrastructure of where would be an appropriate place for these helmets to be stored.
I think we could, yeah, we could find a few places. I, I wonder if we don't even, I don't know, cleaning them and things like that, maybe we just kind of have on hand about five or so at a time. And then just, okay, so we'll talk more about that, Nick, but maybe five to 10 that we have at a given time.
And I wanted just to mention one incident we had real quick about the, the quickness of the geo-fencing and the, and the GPS is, we had someone pick up a scooter and essentially steal it and take it out of the city. And we were notified immediately, law enforcement involved immediately, and we were able to cover that because of the GPS tracking of them. And the response was so quick in that regard. So as far as people stealing them and taking them outside of our geo-fence area, it was alerted very quickly. So just wanted to mention that to council.
Is there anybody under, under 14, Josh? Because I know Toby was there.
Yes, we have. And, and so the first year, it's all education, right? So we encourage our officers to try to turn that as best we can to a positive interaction, educate them. I think education's a real big piece to this. We don't want to be writing 15-year-olds tickets for being on scooters. So we want to educate people so that we can all have fun, be safe with these new devices.
So the ordinance that is 14, that's for your own private scooter and stuff like that? It's not like to use for the company because it's not?
I don't know how the law distinguishes between private company and your own personal scooter.
You're talking about a motorized scooter then?
We're talking about a, a company policy in, in our ordinance, which says you must comply with state law.
Okay. That's a little confusing. The company was 18?
Yeah, it's always been 18. So it's a matter of catching people underage and that their parents allowed them access. I don't know how many people we stopped like that, chief, but.
I have those numbers, but we, when this first was launched, we tried to encourage, make contact, educate the public.
Well, and I feel like that could be an ever-ending job if you were tracking minors on scooters. Do you know what I mean? Like, some parents are going to follow that and tell their kids no, and other parents aren't going to, and then other parents aren't even going to know because their kids are going to get an ID from somebody else.
So we can push education about no one under 18, wear a helmet. Any other questions, issues to?
I still don't like the idea of just these being laid out anywhere. Is there a way we can have like return stations throughout the city?
So they have certain areas where they rebalance too. And, yeah, we're going to, we can work with them to tighten up the timeline. But ultimately, someone is going to ride it to their house and leave it there. Someone's going to have to pick them up at some point. And it does come down to, yeah, how quickly are they going to do that? And what's, yeah, we can put something in the contract.
Well, or could we even state like where to drop it off? I mean, because some people are getting them dropped off, I mean, not at their homes, but they're dropping them off at other people's houses right in front of their walkway. Or some people are leaving them in the road where you have to dodge it. So I, I guess I feel like, I don't know, I heard a lot of complaints from citizens about it. I was not super impressed. I, I don't think it really looked great just leaving scooters all over town. And, and, and the timeline to me is a concern. Three days is a long time to leave a scooter and have to walk around it.
Is that, so I guess maybe, do we have a couple of people against renewing and some for? Is that the?
I'm not against it. I think we should just tweak a few things on it.
Okay.
I, I don't think I'm against it. I'd just like to see things tightened up and more educational opportunities.
I think a lot of people don't understand, you know, leaving the scooters, they park them, they take a picture of them. The beauty of that whole system is that anybody who jumps on an app and wants to use a scooter doesn't have to go to a central spot to get it. They just go to the nearest scooter that's been parked. So I think the system is, is pretty unique in that aspect. So I'm not, I really do kind of think that this is a, that this is a tried and true method that other cities have used as far as what they do with the scooters. They don't go back to a central point. They, they leave them. And then, and then the next person that's closest to that hops on it and rides away. So.
To your point, it's, it was kind of at the beginning, it was opened up where they're kind of figuring out where people are going to and from. So they use that data to find out where to position them and put some multiples. So part of that was the beginning, kind of finding out where people are going.
Well, it sounds like we got 6,800 rides out of it. That seems like somebody was enjoying them.
All right, so we'll bring this back to a future council meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, now we'll have a update on the Gateway project.
Who's you? Dijon Koff, Eugene Magnusson. Hello, my name is Eugene Magnusson. And I represent the Little River Holdings. First of all, I want to thank you, the mayor, and also council for having us here giving a report on the update on the project. Also, we'd like to recognize Chambers, EDC, Stacy, Mark, and also I see our, our chairman is here, Mr. Donz. And also I see Sammy back there too. So, you know, without collaboration of these individuals and also the hard work of the city manager, you know, doing these things are complex. We need all the help we can get. And collaboration is very important. So been, been involved in this for quite a while, but in the sidelines. And now we're taking the lead. So with that, we brought on board T. I think he took off. So anyways, oh, there you are. So anyways, T was brought on board. He provides a level expertise in certain things that we need to get accomplished. And I'll give you an update of where we are at, and then T will finish it off. So one of the things that happened was we were reevaluating the project, okay? So initially, I think you have heard that we're going to do a 100-key hotel. We also had some other projects that we want to do in phases where the dry cleaner was, that whole strip there. And unfortunately, due to COVID and also the escalating cost of getting the supplies and labor, everything went up 30%. Not only did it go up 30%, if you wanted to pick up or purchase some components of your build, it's unavailable. It's sitting in some ship container in the middle of the ocean, sitting there, you know? So it's been very problematic. We have the same issues with our Odno. We have a 300 housing unit in Fruitport, Michigan. We've finished off about 110 homes that we sold. We're in phase two. And we, we run into those problems trying to get appliances, trying to get garage doors, things like that. So it's hitting all across the United States and Manistee is no different from that. We also are looking at increased financing. So just to even finance the construction of that has significantly increased. So when you put pencil to paper, you know, the rationale for doing that makes it a bit tighter to actually make a profit. And we're not looking to make a huge profit, but we're doing it to make a profit, correct? We're also competing against a brand-new, beautiful 100-room hotel on the lake. And they seem to be doing a great job there. So looking forward for that to come up. And then, of course, labor. Labor shortage in the Manistee area is not anything new. We all challenge, are challenged with getting staffing, and the correct staffing, people that you want to interact with your guests. So labor shortages is, is a serious issue. And it's not just here in Manistee. It's all over the place. And then also, we need to take a look at the overall project plan. So we're working on that right now. There'll be more down the road. And then, you know, this is kind of an expensive, complex project. So we want to make sure that we get it done right, okay? So we put a pause on it. We didn't scrap it, okay? We put a pause on it. We're looking at several different opportunities or ideas that would make sense to develop both sides of the road. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to T.
Good evening. I'm TF Taxiades. We'd like to give you an update on what we're doing towards developing the master plan for the project and also address some specific issues that have come up recently, including the appearance of the property, the retaining wall of the old, of the former dry cleaning building, and anything else that you would like to discuss. As Eugene mentioned, the project has evolved. It started with a concept like what Bill is showing that had included a hospitality structure on the north side of River Street where the House of Flavors used to be. Then on the south side, at the former American Dry Cleaners, was going to be a mixed-use building. Then on the west side of the block, on the south side of River Street, there was going to be a building, again with the idea of being mixed-use. And then between the two structures, they had envisioned a parking structure and a residential component above the parking structure. That was one of the plans that, as recently as a couple of years ago, when the project, the concept for this project started about six, seven years ago through the DDA, we were not looking at the parking structure. And we're not looking at a hotel, but the concept is pretty similar. Well, in the last year or so, for a number of reasons, this concept evolved to what you have seen, which is the 100-room hotel at the House of Flavors property, and then surface parking all along River Street. We're in the process of looking at the overall concept plan. And there are reasons for that. In order to pursue city brownfield authority and state approvals for brownfield redevelopment, TIF, tax increment financing, for the purpose of pursuing state grants loans, we have to present an overall plan. And so that the components of the plan can be costed out. And then based on the cost and the projected revenues, we can apply for fund, funding to close the gap, the financing gap. They start doing that, but for a number of reasons, it didn't go very far. There was a partial brownfield plan drafted for just the hotel in the parking lot. So currently, we are looking at the entire project, which would be similar, but not exactly the same as what you've seen there. There will be, we're looking at a hospitality component on the north side. Not necessarily a hotel. It can be a condo hotel, can be condos, can be a combination, even some hotel rooms, with or without a restaurant. On the south side, in the corner of River Street and, and US 31, we're still looking for a mixed-use building that will have retail or commercial on the first and second floors, residential on the third floor. We may go into the fourth floor with residential. On the west side, the building in the corner of Division and River Street will be three or four stories residential, that's apartments. And then between the two buildings will be at least two-story parking. And perhaps residential living units on the upper level or the upper-level structure may serve another or a different use, which may be conference, conference space. I know a lot of this seem to be up in the air. Well, they are. We have engaged a number of consultants to deal with different aspects of this project given the current construction costs, real estate market opportunities, labor availability, and financing. So we have a consultant who is looking at the hospitality component to see what is the best combination of hotel rooms, condo hotel, condos. Excuse me. We have someone who is doing a very targeted. Excuse me, we have someone who is doing a very targeted survey of housing needs through our major employers in the area. We're looking at what, what market, what's the need for professional housing, market-rate professional housing. And then, we have engaged a parking consultant who is going to advise us on different configurations for the parking, size, cost, given what else we decide to do on the remaining of the property. So, that's going to be an ongoing effort where the various components of the project are going to impact and influence decisions on other components. We want to take into consideration any city and DDA infrastructure improvement needs to incorporate them in the, in the Brownfield plan and in the overall concept plan. We've been having some discussions, we have some data from the city already, from DPW and Ed. And we're also talking with potential users for portions of the property, especially the building, the mixed-use building on, on US 31, and also on the hospitality structure. At this point, we expect that we will have concept plans and some renderings to discuss with the city and all of the other stakeholders in spring or summer of this year. Next will be more detailed planning activities. As I have said for many years, while I was working with the city as your redevelopment consultant, these are very complex projects, and they're expensive, and they take a lot of time. This is especially complex. This is one of the most complex projects that I have been involved with. You're looking at over 50 million, more like 60 to 70 million in construction and development costs. In light of the current interest rates, we have to be very sure of what we're going to do in order to go to the MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, to EGO, to the Brownfield Authority, and to the financial institutions, and ask for both the assistance and the financing. And we will do that when we have good data, we have good designs that we can price out. So, summer and fall of this year is when we expect to be doing detailed architectural plans, and then take the plans, provide them to contractors to get pricing. We'll then take the pricing and those plans, and in the fall of this year through spring of next year, we're going to be going through the Brownfield planning process. We're going to be pursuing funding opportunities from the state for portions of the project that are eligible for funding, that funding. And we'll be going to the various financial institutions to secure the private financing. Also, during that time, we'll be working with the city planning commission and our engineers for building and site plans. So, it is going to take some time, and we don't want to fall back to a situation where we only address one issue, and the rest will be jeopardized, the rest of the components will be jeopardized. The construction, someone asked about what is going to be constructed first. At this point, we're looking at a construction that will involve all of the components. We may start from the west side, from the residential components, and move eastward, or through, start with the mixed-use building, and then go to the other components. So, that's, we're looking at two years. Meanwhile, you have, some people have brought up the issue of, well, the place looks ugly. Well, there are two issues related to that. One is the fence around the properties where the buildings have been demolished. The other is the retaining wall on the south side of the former American Dry Cleaners property. As related to the latter, the planning commission and the BRA had some questions about it. We engage a structural engineer, whose report is, the final report is going to be coming out any time, but his preliminary draft report is that that wall, and if I can put those, put a couple diagrams, is that on Ed?
She'll turn it over.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't know which side it's with, no. We can do that. This one, this one. There you go. So, can you hear me from here?
Yes.
So, looking at an aerial view of the wall, so the former Dry Cleaners, actually, the Dry Cleaners was here, this was the landrum at. And, so it was here, it was demolished, and this is the wall that has remained. These are the supports that they installed following the demolition. And these squares here represent concrete columns that are behind the wall, and they are, they extend all the way down to the bottom where there are some large concrete foundations. So, these pillars are supporting the wall if there was some pressure on the wall. There are two sets of braces, and you probably noticed them, there is a set of short ones up at about six feet above grade, and then there's some very long ones that go pretty much all the way to the top of the wall. The lower braces are providing structural stability. The top ones are there, but they are not as supportive, or they are not as needed as the lower ones. In the event, by the way, there has not been any movement on this wall since the demolition back in July, August. And the structural engineer inspected that. But, in case, and this is a cross-section here, right, where there is the wall, there are the braces, the upper set and the lower set. And then, this here shows that in the event something happens, and there is a complete failure of this wall and collapses, the soils behind are going to collapse, then this is the surface of the collapse, meaning that, it's a 45 degrees, that soils from about 14 feet would collapse, assuming that the soils are totally loose, and they are not, because there is a lot of clay in this area. But, again, worst case, this, then the collapse will extend 14 feet or so. The nearest structure, which is the corner of the garage of the other house in the back, is 35 feet, okay? So, according to the structural engineer, that wall is sound, however, he recommends that we inspect it on a regular basis. Dave, you had a question concerning this?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Excuse me, so, the aesthetics has been brought up a number of times. As related to the retaining wall, we have a couple options. One is leave it as is, the other is reconstruct it. Now, eventually, as part of the overall redevelopment, that, that slope, that wall has to be replaced, and it will be most likely a wall similar to the retaining wall on, along Short Street, behind the Edgewater and North Channel, but at a smaller scale. The engineers here, I guess, about the same size, maybe it should be similar to the other. So, that's what we're thinking that will be done as part of the redevelopment. Some people ask, well, why don't we do it now? Well, because someone has to write a check. We will have discussions with the Brownfield Authority, and actually with the state about potential pre-authorization to do this, to build this retaining wall as part of the Brownfield plan, but with pre-approvals, because remember, the Brownfield plan is not going to be in place for, until later this year. And there are some requirements for approval of Brownfield TIF eligible expenses. I have not even discussed this with Ed yet, but we will. Concerning the fence and the banners that were there, the fence was constructed as part of the demolition, necessary for the demolition, but following the demolition, it was left in place because we have some contaminated soils on, on the property. And it is the Little River Holdings do-care obligation to protect the soils, or to protect people from becoming exposed to the soils, and walking around and having kids digging soils and so on. So, unless we do something else, we have another idea, then the fence has to stay The site, or portions of the site, following demolition, were covered with fill material, which however, we're having tested. Today, as a matter of fact, we took samples of that material and see, is the material maybe worse than, than the contamination under the soils? But, we could put a temporary cover over the entire site that would involve topsoil and then put grass, which has to be maintained, which would be a temporary do-care, environmental do-care measure. However, we'll still be concerned about unlimited access to the property. Some kids can always go there and start digging, we don't want that. We could put maybe a series of planters with some small trees around the periphery, put like those plastic chains that provide a visual barrier. We will have to put some not trespassing signs, but that's as pretty as we can do, as we can make this, and without creating liability. But, again, this is a cost that normally will be reimbursable through Brownfield tax increment financing, but we do not have a plan in place, and we cannot have a plan in place because we don't have the cost and the plans for the entire, for the entire development. So, there's a catch-22 there. Again, we'll be discussing.
Question? I, pardon me for, I'm not a developer, but, so this first slide, that's, that's what you first wanted to do?
This is the plan that--
You originally struck with?
Concept, concept plan.
Okay.
Going back, I started about four years ago, and I believe that this last one is 2020 sometime.
Okay, so, there, you, you don't have any financing or any funding? My concern is, because you said that it, the prices of everything are going up, and we all know that, so if they're going to go up again, and interest rates are going to go up again, and it's too costly for you to do, is it just going to stay a bunch of parking lots for the next 10 years? That's, that's my concern, like, did nobody check on funding before you?
Oh, no, we, we have been taking on funding and financing. Now, we know that financing, in the last six months, just, just about doubled. We are seeing some signs of that, that interest rates may drop somewhat. And so, in addition to looking for financing and funding, see, there is the catch-22 in that before we pursue funding from MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the state, we have to present them with a plan. They will not say, yeah, we're going to approve 10 million in public funding under the community revitalization program, without doing a very detailed pro forma that would include detailed plans and costs. So-- So that's what we are trying to do by this summer. And at the same time, the city's Brownfield Authority can approve, and you eventually, approve tax increment, Brownfield tax increment financing. But the Brownfield Authority and you would want to know what are their actual expenses. You know, it's not a blank check. We have to show specifically what are the overall costs, what are the TIF, tax increment financing reimbursable costs. And only then we can prepare a Brownfield Plan for approval. Once we do that, then we can start some expenditures. But until then, we can't. And that's why I was saying earlier that in order to deal with the retaining wall at the dry cleaners or putting a cap, at this point, we cannot do it because we don't have approvals unless we can be pre-approved. And we can get pre-approved for reimbursement through tax increment financing, but only through local tax capture. But we cannot capture the state, the school taxes, which eventually will be reimbursed to the community from the state. Ed, do you want to add anything to that?
I think the only thing that he might be leaving out, which we've got according to, is that's an active Eagle Grant loan site. And so we've got to make sure that some of those conditions are met as well. But that also opens up some potential opportunities. And not a lot of those grant loan funds have been expended yet. So we have to work with the state and Eagle through that. And I'll be coordinating with the development team as to do that because that's a city grant loan package.
Yeah. And I didn't even get to that because it complicates things a bit more. But the city has a grant and a loan from the Eagle, the state environmental agency, to do the demolitions that took place already, to do environmental studies, which we're in the process of planning right now. I'm working with environmental consultant to do these assessments because the environmental assessments that were done in the past were pretty limited. There was enough sampling to say that, yes, the property is contaminated or is not. And based on that, the developer at the time, the Little River Holdings, which was last year and the year before, got from the state environmental liability protection for contamination that had happened before they acquired the property. Now we have to do detailed environmental studies in order to determine, for example, at the location of the hospitality building. Can we excavate below grade? Are we going to get into contaminated soils? We know that we have contaminated soils, but how bad are they? Do we have to put a vapor mitigation system so that people that use and live in that space do not get exposed to vapors above state cleanup criteria? So same thing with the south side. We're going to do a series of borings and that to see are the soils suitable for the projected activities that we're looking at having there? Now, based on the data that I have seen, I feel comfortable that we can proceed with the planning of these structures without being too concerned about the environmental data that we generate in the future. But I cannot tell you with certainty enough which portion of the area where the parking structure would be. We have to excavate and remove soils. Or is the groundwater, does the groundwater produces any vapors that would prohibit us from putting a residential building at the end of the block? And if so, what do we need to do about it? So these activities, environmental studies, as well as the demolition that took place, are supposed to be covered by the grant and loan that was given to the city by the state, as Ed mentioned. Now, due to some complications in how the grant loan were planned, there are some issues that we're dealing with now with the state in terms of eligibility. Because we have lost a portion of that eligibility. But in the big scheme of things, we're more concerned, we're more focused on the future plan and to make sure that we have good enough data that we can price it. Then, as you pointed out, depending on the interest rates, where they go, then we can do adjustments. But
I think most people are just concerned that it's just going to sit there and nothing's going to. So
Well, I do not see a reason why.
Okay.
I think it's doable. Is it challenging? Yes, it is. It's very complex. It will require everybody's cooperation. And everybody has been very cooperative. I'm new to this project. I was just brought in a few months ago. But based on my review of what I have seen and read, everybody has been very cooperative. The city, the DDA. So I have no reason to think that that would not continue. It's in everybody's interest. We're looking of how can we increase the taxable base for that area? How to get more people in that area in the downtown and increase economic activity? That's what it is.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. I can't read this very well. It says residential condo units, building over parking. Does that say 12 units in the parentheses?
It may say, but ignore the number. It's to be determined.
Pardon me?
It's to be determined. Again, this is a plan, this is a concept plan that was never engineered or planned. They never did architectural plans. So this is very conceptual. And but we'll be able to tell you later this year how many.
My personal opinion is I think that number needs to be higher than 12 units. So that's
How would we do that?
I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, if you look at this, only a portion of the site, right now, they showed condo units. First of all, may not be condos, may be residential apartments because that's where we see the need to be.
Okay.
Secondly, we have a lot of area there. So if the architects can generate a plan that will increase you know, make it more attractive for condos, then we'll put more. But yes, we would like to maximize the space we have. Again, it has to make financial sense.
Okay.
So the pro forma will show that. Sure, that's a good comment. Yes, sir.
Tim, you mentioned funding and finances, then you mentioned the loan and the grant. Is there any risk to that loan not being covered based on your funding and finances?
There is no danger in losing the loan. However, we want to make sure that we utilize that the entire loan and especially the entire grant. Because the loan would be repaid through the Brownfield TIF plan.
You don't have one?
Which we don't have.
So is a loan currently outstanding and not being paid? Or the loan?
No, the loan, yeah. The state loans have five years to start repayment. So this loan was made last year. And secondly, there is, Ed, who has been doing this for a long time, has an agreement, or the city has an agreement with Little River Holdings for the repayment of that loan if something happens and we need to do that.
I mean, the city's got good protection. And the Eagle realizes that these are complex projects. And that's why they typically give you five years before you have to repay loans. It's because it takes time to get the product built and all the approvals and then start generating the revenue to pay it back.
So today, nothing at risk?
And that's similar to what we had with other projects. They give us five years to start repayment.
Anybody else?
I'm having a lot of trouble with this thing. You know, I keep hearing we could, we could, we will have to. All these borings you should have done. I thought some of that should have been done long time ago. You tore down the buildings and now we're sitting there and we're still going through this problem of we have to do all this work. And I don't see, when are we going to start building is what people want to know.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, we are looking. First, we have to plan this correctly.
Did they have a plan before?
Was not.
I just wanted to add kind of what they were saying. But I attended the Planning Commission meeting recently. And one of the things that came up that was a little concerning was that you had mentioned about the aesthetics, which I get there's a difference between the aesthetics and structure. And I don't envy you for having to balance those two things in this economic climate. But the aesthetics is what the public sees. So when I was at that Planning Commission meeting, you said it could look the way it is right now for the next two years. That's concerning to me. I mean, that is the entryway to River Street. So I feel like if nothing else, we need to focus on that. Like even if you say we can't break ground on a project for two years because of contractors and budgeting and all that. I get all that, but that's not what the public sees. Like, that's all the behind-the-scenes stuff that nobody really appreciates after the fact. Do you know what I mean? But I guess I'm concerned because quite frankly, it's an eyesore. And I'm not trying to be rude when I say that. Like, I get the safety thing, so I get why the fence needs to be there. I get all that. But that's not like the most appealing site when you pull onto River Street. And I get kind of like where Councilmember Bachman was mentioning about the financing and things like that. And I get all of that. But at some point, do we say like, hey, we're just going to start to invest something into that, even if it's just on the aesthetic end to please the public? I don't know. That's just a question I have. And with the drawings, I get that this is a concept. And you threw a lot of information at us tonight. So I apologize if my takeaway isn't right on that. But eventually, can we get like a best-case scenario, worst-case scenario? Like, I mean, a basic commitment? Like, and I know that's going to take some time, but things change. So I guess when we present that project or we look at a plan, can we say we're going to at least guarantee this? But these might be additional things that have to come off the table if we can't afford it? Or there's not a commitment there?
No, that's a valid question. And in the last, I would say in the last week, since I discussed this with the Planning Commission, some of the ideas came up about how to beautify the property and how to maybe support that wall other than with the braces. And so the intent right now is to take these ideas, discuss them with the Brownfield Authority because that's where we have to start and with the state and see if we can do something more aesthetically pleasing on a temporary basis. Now, the bridge is going to be reconstructed and the traffic is going to be routed through First Street. Well, actually, we talked this afternoon with the Downtown Development Authority about can we do something else temporary to beautify so that maybe can be an alternate route? We have not even discussed that with Jeff or anybody else or the DOT. But no, we understand the situation. And we would like to see something, be able to do something.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Discussion on dining platforms, Chief Glass.
I'm going to ask to just bring this topic up. During the COVID pandemic, restaurant indoor dining was highly restricted. As a result, restaurant owners came to council then and asked for outdoor dining platforms. Council approved, council approved utilization of two parking spots. My understanding is all the restaurant owners went out and bought these platforms out of their own money. It appears that outdoor dining has kind of been a staple of the River Street dining experience. A complaint came up this year that now that we're out of the COVID pandemic, why are they still allowed to dine platforms? My recommendation to council is by direct staff to develop some type of ordinance, policy, procedure that would, if you wish, allow outdoor dining platforms and then maybe create a path for someone who would like to apply for outdoor dining platforms. So just to bring it up to chew on it, to see if that's something council has an appetite for.
I think that's a great idea. I don't have a problem with it.
Has anybody, any more merchants asked to have any more areas outside Josh?
Not to me. I haven't heard of anything. The only thing we've heard of is, I'll just say, one complaint about why are they still allowed to use, why are restaurants allowed to use space? So I think it's just important to have some type of policy procedure written that allows for, and then creates a path. And again, just my two cents is that would be approval of council to utilize the two spots moving forward. So
So we just have to modify the existing ordinance to allow it. It seems like this was a good trial period. But I think to continue, we should modify it to make it kind of a legal item. And these businesses also did invest about 10,000 in those platforms. So they are invested. I don't know if they made their money back with this. But as Chief mentioned, it is kind of an experience on River Street, the outdoor dining. So we'd bring that back at a future council meeting. I just wanted to see if there's any concerns or issues that we can address. But if council's in favor, we'll present a modified ordinance at a future meeting. The DDA Director supports it. We're going to discuss it tomorrow as well at the DDA meeting.
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion on budget priorities.
Okay, so just to kind of frame this a little bit. These were items. This isn't, obviously, the budget discussion is going to be ongoing. We're going to have to talk about streets, staffing, water and sewer projects, motor pool. These were kind of some general fund items that kind of came up throughout the year that we said we'd discuss going into the budget. So we wanted to kind of talk about these things. Keeping in mind, you know, last year, our general fund budget was about 7.6 million of that. 5.76 million was staffing. So we don't have a lot of funds, but we have to look at, like we did in that exercise, kind of prioritizing things, seeing what fits, kind of looking at kind of low-hanging fruit for how we can accomplish goals. So we'll go through these. The first one on here, the Masti Proud Project Planning. I just wanted to give kind of a surprise for Kelly. We did a council and everyone, we bought a plaque. And we'd like to present this to you, kind of thank you for all your hard work.
to work on the marina, I think we kind of found about, I learned more about kind of, Thank you. I'm used to volunteer projects being a day or a half a day, and then there's like, I pitch some money and we have a pizza party or shirts, but I know that Kelly kind of, they're bigger projects. I think the one last year spanned three weeks. We kind of had discussions, myself, Jeff, and the mayor, previous and, and the current mayor with Masti Proud about kind of a scope of work, making sure we budget and so we can have a successful project. So just some, some items to talk about. I think, just so everyone's aware, we discussed the Lions Pavilion money with the new rental policy we implemented from the Parks Commission, that we received 41,000, 4,100 this year, and we originally talked about that's going to be dedicated to the Lions Pavilion. So what we're looking to do this year with Masti Proud is maybe have a budget allocation of about maybe 5,000 or 7,500, or to be determined with Masti Proud to kind of accomplish a project if they're interested in going forward. So that I'll turn over to Jeff to fill in any blanks.
Yes, essentially, with the volunteers, there's a lot of momentum going. Bill mentioned, they spent about three weeks at the marina, had a tremendous impact, got a lot of positive things done. And bless Kelly's heart, her brain started going and she came up with a, you know, a three-page list that I think was forwarded to you in one of the, the updates. And so in supporting all that effort, and we want to keep that going, so, and we don't want to be put in a position where it starts to eat into our operating budgets, and so that was one of the solutions that, that the city manager came up with is maybe we, we dedicate, you know, some amount of money as a line item that goes towards supporting those volunteer efforts, and it makes it easier and more fluid to just, you know, continue to support those, those efforts.
Anybody?
Do we have any sense of what that will do for them? We have a project list and how that, impact that list, or are we setting those priorities that want to get done?
Well, we do have the list that, that Kelly had submitted late last, I think it was in probably August, September. We hadn't priced those out, but as a follow-up to that, we did have that meeting and said, you know, in the future, we, we really need a scope, you know, a full scope of that work. We need to know what those cost expectations would be, and then the timeframe to do those in. So the last couple of years, any, we've been, we've been trying to supply as much of the materials and some of the equipment that we can, and we've been just taking that out of the operating budget. The city manager did ask me to track that for a week last summer, and we, we bought a piece of equipment, so I'm going to take that out of it, but just the supplies and materials were about $1,000 to support that effort.
Theoretically, if they went to work and they spent that $7,500 in June, does that mean they worked over for the summer, or are we still supporting through the operation budget, or is all that stuff, I mean, do we, I don't know how far you thought this out?
I don't think I've had any discussions past that. It's, it's really so that we don't take it, because I think, I think the, the maintenance and repair budget for parks is about.
51,000.
Is that what it is? 51,000. So you can easily eat up 10% of that and, and it doesn't cover the things that we had budgeted for. And you know as well as anybody that the general fund monies are always, there's always pressure on that to try to bump those out, but I think if we had some, some sort of dedicated line item, and then I think if that money gets exhausted and there's additional requests, then we just got to analyze that against the operating budget.
This would be new money, though. You wouldn't be taking it from the parks line item for maintenance, you wouldn't subtract 7,500 from the park maintenance and put it over there, would you?
That would be my proposal, is that it would be new dedicated money.
New dedicated money?
Yes.
Are we asking for the public to put in any money yet? I mean, the bank did give Kelly some money and.
Right, and, and because they're not a nonprofit, Kelly's worked with Bill and Ed and I, and I believe we've got that in escrow right now, so they're able to.
It didn't, it didn't happen yet. We talked about pros and cons of it, because we'd still have to follow through our sign-off purchasing, you know, our follow-up purchasing policy, so, but we, we talked about that as an option.
So, yeah, so we, we've been trying to explore some ways that we can help facilitate if they do get donations and how that gets handled.
There's going to be some oversight in how they spend it. Who's got to sign off on it? Pay those invoices? What's the spending thresholds are? I mean, there's a lot of dynamics going into that. And that's.
Right.
Kelly's lap?
Well, it, it would end up falling ultimately undermined.
Sign the invoices.
To sign the invoices. And we talked about ways, you know, is there a way to, for them to access the money and, and be able to just go to the store and buy the stuff, but in order to comply with our purchasing policy, we have to have somebody that is a signature to our accounts and is responsible for those, so we would need to, so what we've been doing is just as they need stuff, I have Mickey or Brandon run and get that stuff for them.
We could theoretically amend the purchasing policy, though, to make an adjustment for that.
That could be a possibility.
Make it more streamlined.
Yeah, because.
I mean, that doesn't make any sense if she can run the harbor for it, pick it up and charge the account for two gallons of paint to call Mickey and Mickey go do it, because you're just subtracting Mickey from what he's supposed to be doing. We ought to look at, we ought to look at any of that policy to allow that to happen.
The more, the more, the more efficient, yes, the more efficient we can be in that process, the less impact it has on us.
Correct.
And the easier it is on them, and everybody's happier.
Correct. I mean, it's a step, it's not the whole bag, so.
Yeah. So I think.
Yeah, and I think that was.
We're just looking for generally if you support that, and, and if there is general support, then we, we can plan on that through the budget process.
I support it.
I feel like they've taken on a lot of projects that used to be city projects or were done, so if they're willing to volunteer their time, it saves us resources in some ways, so I feel like we have to support that financially.
Thank you. So another discussion item, the boat launch machine and updating that to produce stickers for annual passes or daily passes, and I'll turn it over to Ed to discuss some of those items.
So just a quick review, you've got on the screen in front of you of the auto attendant. We used to have staff sit down there and collect money and talk to the fishermen, and that was between seven or, seven to $8,000 per year 15 years ago, so today, a dollar, that'd be easily 10,000. By getting the boat launch machine, which Councilmember Bachman spearheaded, I believe, when you were harbor master way back when, that cost about 13,000. We were able to eliminate the staffing down there. The machine, if you look at the whole history of it, we've, we've put quite a bit of parts back into it. It's not overly expensive to do that, but in general, it's very reliable. The customers that use our boat launch, there's a lot of repeat customers, they, they understand it pretty well, our staff knows how to maintain it and use it. We've improved the signage on the machine to address some concerns that council and others had, had voiced, and we've worked well with the police department to, for enforcement, so if we know that the machine's down, they know not to take it, and then we try to get that back up and running as quickly as we can. One of the challenges we have down there at the boat launch is, is just the layout of it. It's not a, it's not a parking garage that I have gated access to, and so if we want to do or replace that machine with something different or better, it's going to take quite a bit of research to figure that out, and there may not be a better solution. There may be a machine that I can access over the internet and get better data and know when it's down quicker, but we would have to do quite a bit of research that. I've started gathering that information, my staff started to gather that, but we haven't, you know, gone the whole way to take a look at that. My recommendation would be that we think the machine works fairly well, it's still got life left, we've, we've invested some money into it, and I wouldn't recommend changing it at this time. A new machine's probably going to cost you a minimum of 20,000, which doesn't seem to be very cost-effective in my estimation. We can certainly continue to do research. I've queried, I've gotten some information from a couple other communities, but their setup is different than ours, so we have to figure out if there's a better way to do it, but at this time, that machine seems to be working fairly well. So that's, that's kind of where the staff's recommendation is, but I'd be curious to hear what council's thoughts were.
Is there a way that people can purchase permits online instead of the machine? The problem is that, you know, we've got visitors that under, don't understand the system, and they're afraid that this little piece of paper will get them in trouble with the police department, so.
So what do you mean by purchasing them online?
Like if you go on our website and say, okay, I want a season pass, and then have it mailed to them or something so it's more permanent?
We will mail it to them if they call in. We don't have a way to actually like do a total credit card transaction online to get a season pass, but Kaylee does that quite a bit, and we have a lot of people that'll come in now right before Christmas. We get the passes for the next year in the fall or late fall, so they can buy them for Christmas presents. So we already do that, but there's not, I mean, there's not a way to actually do a, we don't have a online payment portal for that, and it really wouldn't add much to the efficiency on it anyway, but we can, we could improve the website, say if you'd like to buy a season pass in advance, just, you know, contact Kaylee and you can take, we can take credit cards.
Yeah, if you could improve it, because I know some people would, would go online and don't understand, like there was nothing there to see the process.
Yeah, and we can, we can certainly.
Or have a form that they can fill out, you know, email back or something with their credit card information.
How difficult would it be to add a online payment option?
It depends on what you mean by online payment option. Different levels.
How you don't have a way to take credit card payment online? They have to call that in?
We, we don't have the ability to take the credit card payment for the boat launch sticker at this time. If that's something that council would like us to explore, we can do that and see if we can integrate it with our current system. If not, we can come up with some alternative solutions that'll help to streamline that.
I, I guess I'm just thinking a lot of people do things online anymore, like if I don't have to go, I mean, I mean with work schedules and things like that, I think people are just doing things online, and a lot of people prefer just for efficiency to do it online rather than go somewhere and do it, so I'm just wondering if we either increase the advertisement or, again, I don't know, because I don't, I don't do that, like how difficult would it be to seek out online payment option? Like is that cost prohibitive?
I can look, well, it, it could be very prohibitive depending on what we're doing, and we do, we don't necessarily want to introduce another payment channel, but I can look into that to see if we can make that more streamlined, see if we can do some options, we can take a look at that.
They could, personally, they could pay for a seasonal pass at the ramp and then bring it in and exchange it for the sticker, is that correct?
Yeah, and they can come in and use their credit card at City Hall to pay for their sticker, and, and it was also Councilmember Bachman when he was harbor master, because City Hall's only open from eight to five, that we can pick them up at the marina and they have extended hours. So given the layout that we have down there, we, we've kind of accommodated the public to the best of our ability without adding staffing, which we don't want to do because it's rather expensive.
Just last question, has the Harbor Commission signed off on staff recommendations, or have you not mentioned this to them?
On this, no, this was something that the city manager asked us to prepare. The Harbor Commission is aware that the machine, you know, is down there obviously, and it's fairly reliable. I mean, I'm not saying it's up 100% of the time, but it, it hasn't been problematic in the last several years. There was a period there where we did have some problems, we had to replace a few components.
They haven't pushed for a change in the task?
I'd have to check with Mr. McCula.
To share this with them?
Or Jeff McCula.
What's the life expectancy on the machine?
Well, I would, I, when I've talked to Hamilton Manufacturing, they readily have spare parts for that, so it's easy enough, it's modular, so you can swap out the coin hopper, you can swap out the credit card thing. We haven't had a main board fail, which I guess at that point, you'd probably not replace that, but we'd have to see what the cost is. So in terms of a life expectancy, I mean, I would normally depreciate a machine like that over five years, so it's, it's past its life expectancy, it's fully depreciated, but it's still working just fine.
Okay. So. So I don't think, like, I mean, you're a finance director, I don't think like that. So when Jeff gave the report on the state of the streets, like we went through, and he was, it was under budget 440,000, and I understand, like, a lot of that's like grants, but some of it's not. So where does that extra money go back to?
So the boat launch fund is a enterprise fund, so any money that it generates in excess of its costs goes back into the fund balance. Keep in mind, we were paying off debt from the Arthur Street Boat Launch up until, I think, a year ago. So a lot of the revenue that the boat launch was generating was being used to pay the debt that paid for the improvements at the Arthur Street Boat Launch.
But the money that we didn't spend on the streets, because we were under budget, almost a half a million dollars, say 200 of that was grants. The other 300,000 went into general fund?
No, street funds stay in the street funds.
Okay.
I'm just confused, I thought you were talking about the boat.
Well, I was just trying to figure out, like, where, like, when we're under budget on things, where stuff goes to where we can't use it and knock out some of these things that need to be done.
Well, that's a whole nother discussion, but many of our funds have legal requirements that they be separately segregated and they can't be used, so we can't use street funds for the boat launch.
Okay.
But one of the things, one of the things we're doing in the boat launch now that the debt is paid off, is we are trying to accumulate fund balance, because we've talked about potentially funding, potential resurfacing of that big parking lot, that could be a source of that revenue, or if we want to do improvements at Knight Street Boat Launch, then it could fund that. Plus, at some point, we're going to have to do some more repairs and maintenance to Arthur Street, so the, the fund has needs, but the, the big debt service payment is now done, so.
Doesn't some of the money, we saw an increase of almost a million dollars in the general fund this year, as I saw in the audit, so some of that money comes from money that was budgeted that didn't get spent, is that not true?
Some of that is, but the vast majority of that is the ARPA funds. So we had ARPA, ARPA funds, that's almost $700,000 worth of that.
But if the police department's under budget by 10,000, that goes in the general fund balance, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's part of it there.
Correct, yeah, um, yes.
So a lot, so some of these things we can still use ARPA funds for?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The ARPA funds, recall, we, the Treasury Department allowed us in many small communities to take 100% of that as what they call revenue replacement. Once you do that and you make that election, those funds become unrestricted. We've internally restricted them, so council can decide how they want to spend those, but in terms of what we can use it for, it's pretty much anything, within reason. There are some high-level limitations, they can't use it to pay pension debt, for example, but for almost any other capital project, they'd be allowable to be used for, for the ARPA funds.
Yeah, we did try to leverage, we tried to leverage some, a lot of that funding, too, so 260,000 was for that North River Walk grant, was for the match, that we didn't get awarded, but then potentially, we could go for it again and up the match, and maybe that's one of the topics later.
Okay.
So, and we can look into, I think, it's the last community I worked at, we did have a credit card option. You do have to do, go into an agreement, it probably would, if we're going to compare, it's going to be a full, probably RFP process to find a, but ultimately, then we could add other things to it. A lot of communities, when they do this, though, you, you do have to pay that service charge, so they'll tack that on, so even though you're getting that, residents will get the convenience, but you'll probably pay a little bit more, that way we get our full cost.
Just to clarify, we do take credit cards. We take credit cards for water bills, we take credit cards for taxes. We're not a retail outlet, there's very few things that we sell. Boat, boat ramps, passes are one thing and garbage bags, but beyond that, we don't sell stuff. So 99% of our need for credit cards is already covered. That's why we, that's, it's just different than a retail setting, but as I said, we'll look into it, there may be a way to streamline it, even if we can't actually have a real seamless way on the website, and then we'll take a look at that.
Do you have a VNM credit card in?
There is, yep, because we can't pass that on, on taxes, I can't absorb that, and it's not fair to the ratepayers if people are paying it on the credit card and somebody's paying cash over here. Some places do that, that's a policy decision that council would have to make, but the fee is, I believe it's a minimum of $2 or 3%.
Just to let the people know.
Yeah, and most, and Kaylee's very good about making sure, and all my staff is, that people know that before they pay with credit card, so it's, it's pretty well disclosed.
How much did you take in on that machine at First Street? Just say one year.
The total boat launch revenues are right around $40,000, and the vast majority of them, probably at least 90%, if not 95%, come from that machine. We do have a pay tube at the Arthur Street Boat Launch, which works okay, but most people are going to buy their season passes and there's, that's more local launch, so there's not, not as much use. Thank you.
First Street, First and Maple pedestrian crossing, but showing up, we did get a couple of. So even though you're getting that, residents will get the convenience, but you'll probably pay a little bit more. That way we get our full cost.
Just to clarify, we do take credit cards. We take credit cards for water bills, we take credit cards for taxes. We're not a retail outlet. There's very few things that we sell. Boat, boat ramps, passes are one thing and garbage bags, but beyond that, we don't sell stuff. So ninety-nine percent of our need for credit cards is already covered. That's why we, that's, it's just different than a retail setting. But as I said, we'll look into it. There may be a way to streamline it, even if we can't actually have a real seamless way on the website and we'll take a look at that.
Do you have a VNM credit card in?
There is, yep, because we can't pass that on, on taxes. I can't absorb that. And it's not fair to the ratepayers if people are paying it on the credit card and somebody's paying cash over here. Some places do that. That's a policy decision that council would have to make, but the fee is, I believe it's a minimum of two dollars or three percent.
Just to let the people know.
Yeah, and most, and Kaylee's very good about making sure and all my staff is that people know that before they pay with credit cards. So it's, it's pretty well disclosed.
How much do you take in on that machine at First Street? Just say one year.
The total boat launch revenues are right around forty thousand dollars and the vast majority of them, probably at least ninety percent, if not ninety-five, come from that machine. We do have a pay tube at the Arthur Street Boat Launch, which works okay, but most people are gonna buy their season passes and there's, that's more local launch, so there's not, not as much use. Thank you.
First Street, First and Maple pedestrian crossing, but showing up. We did get a couple of letters of support today in my email, but I'll send that out to council tomorrow. But we'll talk about a couple of different options over there. I think it's gonna be the, it's gonna be a number three.
Yes, first of all, good evening. I haven't been up here in a while. We did first, the First and Maple Street Crossing, this came up, oh, three, four years ago. It wasn't, you know, there's concerns about safety here. Recently, there was an accident that occurred at this location. And different items came up. We talked to our, our traffic engineer, our safety engineer to get some of his opinions. He had already looked into this three years ago. And so we kinda re, we re-looked into some of those items, had to do a lot more with pedestrians, the crosswalks, what condition they were in, did they meet ADA? And then the most recent, you know, item that came up was just something lighting. This intersection is dark. And so we've been talking internally, there really hasn't been any detailed studies or anything, but we probably have enough, we can discuss it tonight is. We let, we kinda laid out some tiers to the approach of the intersection. So the first one is probably the one we like the most because we don't necessarily have to invest anything capital. We just have to get with consumers and consumers themselves with coordination will put lights up. And then the city will have to pay the bill for the, for the electricity. So that's one thing we have, that hasn't started yet. We've talked to Jeff and we will, you know, we'll, we can start reaching out to consumers to see how we can improve lighting at the intersection. So that'd be.
I'm sorry, do you just mean just like street lighting?
Just straight street lighting, not signals, but street lighting, just.
Aren't they already doing that, Sean? Didn't they say they're gonna do every light in the city with LED lights?
They, they are, but this one just really has the one light and it's currently, at least the lumens in it are pretty low. You know, it doesn't really, if you see it at night, it does not light that intersection very well. Talking with our lighting, our electrical engineer, his, he says if we had like a hundred comparable, a hundred and fifty watt light, LED, if we had two of them, we could, we could significantly improve the lighting in that intersection. And again, this doesn't have to be an investment by the city, it can be some coordination with consumers. So that would, that's kind of, I think, an easy no brainer. We just go that route, we get some, the lighting improved. There might have to be some discussions regarding the Ramsdale, making sure we're not affecting any historical issues, but it would be within the right of ways, so. And there is at least one post out there, there's another guy post. Between those two, we're hoping we can maybe utilize them. The cost could come up if we have to add, you know, more posts and I don't know what consumers would pay for that and what they would not pay, but. So that's a coordination item. The tier two is basically to just simply replace the heads or the actual signals. That's what's hanging from the cables. And so that is actually budgeted, it's in the budget right now. We got kind of a conservative price of forty grand to replace those. I think it's actually with our traffic engineers, we think it's gonna be less than that, but kind of a safe number. And that, that's within the budget, which, what's budgeted right now. So that would be to replace those, they'd get, they'd be LED, it'd be a little brighter, but same function, really nothing changes. The third tier is what we introduced three years ago, except I get to deliver the message, it's a lot more expensive. Just like previous speakers, construction costs have literally gone up thirty to fifty percent. That option right there would basically be every corner, all the sidewalks would be redone, ADA accessible. They'd have the indicators on them, so you'd, they made all the current codes. We would add crosswalk beacons at every corner. And there's a lot of different, like you'd think it'd be really simple. There's different ways you can do that. So we have one option that's in the hundred and ten thousand. But basically, every corner, there would be a beacon and it would direct you to go or not go. So that would, and then as part of really that project or really even tier one or tier two, we would, we would improve. Jeff's gonna get the striping at the intersection just painted. There's been a lot of discussion at the, the lanes are really narrow, so the arrows are kind of a funny size, so he's, he's working on getting templates. But that's, that's painted every year. There's some discussion maybe that warrants being painted more often than once a year because it does wear, it seemed to wear pretty fast, so. We discussed, there's these stickers you can put down, they're lighting, they're highly reflective, highly visible stickers, but the snowplows tend to rip them up. And then if you have part of them ripped up, then you can't paint that part that's ripped up and it gets, kinda creates a mess, so. So painting of those stripes. The fourth tier is kind of what we'd say modernizing the intersection. And that's basically having to look kinda close to what it looks like down the hill at River and First, where we have the mast arms and the lights on them. The very, the most typical layout these days that our traffic engineers do is what's on the right, it's kinda hard to see, but these red lines would be the mast arms. And then they would hang out, then each one would have a couple of signals on them. You'd have your left hand turn and you'd have the stop signals. But that drives price up significantly. You're looking at, you know, almost a half million dollars of work. Those, those mast arms, lighting, electrical conduits, you got signal controls in there, definitely drive the price up. So that's, that's kinda how we laid it out for a discussion. I'm not sure if there's anything to add, Jeff, to, to that.
I think, I wanted to add too that, so we had the police chief look back at incidents at these locations. And actually, if you could pull up that, we looked at a couple of places on thirty-one also. But there are MDOT grants, safety grants available where there's a twenty percent match. And those would be great to have for something like this. Unfortunately, we don't have the accident data. Fortunately, or unfortunately, the way you're looking at it, but we don't have the data to support. We'll pull up Chief Glass's memo. It's a pedestrian, car versus pedestrian stance, fourth from the bottom. So there's a couple other areas we're looking at adding lighting enhancements. I know Councilman Poniat, we're looking at Twelfth Street quite a bit and East Street. But First and Maple, we had the car accident with a pedestrian there. But that's over the last ten years, so just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
What are you looking for? You want some suggestions?
Um, yeah, let's, we can go back to those tiers.
Is there an option between, I'll go back, wait till it pops up again?
While you're waiting for that, the, the signal heads need to be replaced. We're burning out light bulbs very frequently. The shade protectors, there's several that are missing. We've been trying to order them for years and they can't get us the right size that fits. So like Sean said, we already have money budgeted in the current budget. So we're planning on replacing the signal heads and then I plan on reaching out to consumers. So tier one and two are, are planned. It's just, I, I think the question is, is council interested in funding tier three or beyond that?
Isn't there something in between tier two and three, like a two and a half?
Tier two point five.
Well, cause my concern is, is, I've been saying it for years, all of the lights from downtown, when you get to Maple, take a right. And everything else is up the hill. You've got the library, you've got the Ramsdale. The Chippewa Auto Place is, is gonna be a walk-up restaurant probably by summer, they're gonna be ready to go. And then you've got the hotel. So it's, it's just dark in that strip and you've got all these kids walking around, especially in summertime. And they don't know how to cross the street. So I don't know if there's, I mean, I get that it's a lot of money and it's probably gonna be a pain for that corner house to put in a, a light pole there. But I'm just trying to be proactive with all of the traffic that's gonna be at the new hotel in that corner that somebody is gonna get hit. I know everybody, you have to wait until there is, you know, something happens before you get money to fix it, but I'm just trying to figure out a way between two and three that we can fix that to.
Why would we, why would we want to step down from three to something in between? Why don't we just fix it like all the other big intersections?
I've been trying to fix it for years.
I know, but we're here today. Instead of trying to say, back, let's just say fix it.
Yeah.
Let me speak as a kindergarten teacher, walking a hundred kindergarteners across there to go to the library. It's scary. It's really scary. Now, of course, we only do it once a year, but it, you, there's not enough arms, there's not enough hands, there's not enough, you're, the whole time you're just freaking out that somebody's gonna not see this little kid. And I'm all for tier three and anything else that we can do to make that corner safe. There's a lot of traffic, it's.
I'm just, I'm just frustrated because last year it was seventy thousand, now it's a hundred and ten.
Well, everything's that way.
I think we should put tier three in the capital improvement budget and bring it to the budget. I, I totally agree with, not just the kid, but the hotel's gonna create more traffic, a walk-up restaurant, more traffic. And I don't think we should wait until, we should've done it. We should be proactive and do it and.
Yeah, I think this is one of those, one of those items where we're not necessarily advocating for or against. It's just where do you wanna spend the money at?
Where's that forty thousand dollars in the budget? I don't remember that.
It's in the street budget.
In the street budget?
Yep.
Okay.
So does that take away, since you're already doing that, does that cut the cost down from tier three, since you're already?
It adds one ten.
And then I don't understand why you have to redo the sidewalks because they're already all on a slant. Like none of those sidewalks you step up. I don't understand that.
There's a state standard that you need to meet, like we can, if you do work in, on any of your roads, you can get audited at a federal level. If you don't upgrade your intersections to meet the state ADA standard, there's a certain cross slope, you have to have the indicators, they have to point you to a place where you can land safely. All these things come into play and, and honestly, that intersection doesn't meet it.
Okay.
So it's, it's tough that, you, you, there's, it's just a tough deal. It's, you need to replace them if you wanna meet standards.
Yeah, so in, in all of our, our street projects now, we're having to do that. So it's a new component that, that we started doing probably five, six years ago. So once we do work in this intersection, we're obligated to upgrade those. And it, and it does add more safety as well.
Okay.
And one more reason too, the pedestals take up a lot of areas, so if you can just insert the pedestals in the poles, so you have to take out the whole area.
And there's like conduits for electricity, that gets tore up, so it, it all gets kinda tore up anyway, so.
One thing I would say is because we have the push button, so this would be able to, you know, if you've got that class that comes up to the intersection, they can press the button, which will then cycle the signal to allow for that crossing. So it does take some, some wearing, it does take some reprogramming within our control box, along with signal heads. So if council moved forward with this and we budgeted that, then I would probably combine and have those tier two and three done together.
Any idea what a timeline would look like for that project? Realizing that.
Well, I've, if, yeah, if it was approved in the, in the budget, which would occur in May, the funds would be available July first. So we would need to go through a design process. It's probably spring of twenty-four.
Yeah, at the latest. He did say it was pretty straightforward process. The intersection stuff takes a little bit. Yeah, we, we could shoot for fall, but no later than spring.
So it's possible for this?
Well, I just, if council makes it a high priority project, they could do a budget amendment and then you could get started.
That's true.
It's gonna exist, it's a, our June thirtieth is just a measurement point, so it's, that's an option.
But right now, that forty thousand for the signal head replacement is coming from the street funds?
Correct.
I, I think that we need it. I think that it's just a matter of time before something happens there.
I agree and I like Mr. Preff's suggestion.
Well, if that happened, it would move the timeline up where we could start implementing the design now and have that work done this year.
Do you have that capacity and staff and engineering to do that?
Yeah, we can, our transportation industry is gonna be able to.
I go favor that.
Further questioning on that one.
Can we apply to the revenue sharing board too for some of this, like right off the bat? Cause it's safety.
I don't know, do you have?
They don't really fund those types of projects, but I can, they're trying to approach them, but it's not definitely a type of project we're doing. Maybe some applications I've seen in the past.
It's shot down, so.
Try it. I mean, it's a lot to do with community safety, so.
Traditionally, we use that grant to fund other critical items like bulletproof vests, tasers, things like that, but something we can approach.
I would like to.
Might be a grant, it might be a grant match option if there's a grant involved in this, you might put up there's a grant match option.
Yeah, and the, what Sean, or I think the city manager was talking about, the safety funds that MDOT grants out, they look for very dangerous intersections and intersections with fatalities. That's where that money gets spent. So I think he was saying the good news is we don't have a big accident history. The bad news is that makes us not eligible for the MDOT funds.
But that accident history was car and pedestrian. I wonder what the car and car accident history would be given the lighting situation there a little bit. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do. I don't know.
I can get that data, that drives the situation.
No, no, I just wonder if, if there's any, I mean, for me, it doesn't matter. I think there's an issue there regardless. And I think that with that being one of the main intersections, having it be ADA accessible and appropriate is, is a concern. But I guess I was just wondering if there are grant opportunities or there's a way to get some funding back on that. If there's something that looks at car-to-car crash too, like that might be worth exploring. I don't know.
Yeah, we, we do a lot of those safety grants, we're pretty familiar with them. And, and it, just to put it bluntly, people have to die at the intersection. I mean, to be really frank, you need deaths. And I mean, they do have some other serious injuries they could have, but in most cases, that's what it takes. It's very, fairly competitive for the money across the entire state, so. So the good news is you don't have that, the bad news is it does affect that, even in car-to-car, so.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
So I think next they will have a, an ERP or a, an engineering estimate on that to get started and approved. So Fifth, Fifth Avenue Beach Wall, I think Sean is next on that.
So I, obviously, this is something that Councilwoman Beaton brought up and, but it's something that we've had in our capital improvement plan for a number of years. Number one, at the end of Fifth Avenue, so there's kinda two separate projects on the screen. The one that's on the left, we were looking into some flood mitigation when we had the high lake levels and we would get a storm, we'd have a lot of wave run up. The waves would actually come up far enough up the beach, enter the cul-de-sac and then flood out pretty much that whole small neighborhood there. So when we did the two thousand twenty capital improvement bond, we included some money in, in that bond to start addressing some of that. And so we're still exploring what that could be. But some components of it could be to improve or put in a new storm sewer outlet to at least let the water, if it gets onto the streets, to get it back out. Some of it, some discussion has been to build a wall so that we stop the wave run-up from even reaching the cul-de-sac. So we're still exploring that. But specifically to Councilwoman Beaton's request, or up, you asked for an update on it. But we have, we've got a real problem with sand mitigation and erosion. We clean the beach, which takes out all the, the coarse material and we leave that beautiful fine sand, but it's very susceptible to wind blowing it around. And so one of the things that we had put numbers together years ago was to put a wall along the parking lot at Fifth Avenue, kinda the way we do at First Street where the concession stand is. And then we had actually talked about where that green section is putting in some other walls there to kinda keep that sand in its location, be able to vegetate it and, and keep it from crossing the road and the, the parking spaces down below and getting into the neighbors' yards. The estimate that Spicer put together recently was to, to do a port wall along the parking lot would be about fifty-four thousand dollars. And just kinda balancing out costs and priorities, that green space, what we've discussed recently is possibly planting dune grass in that location with the understanding that dune grass traps sand. And when it does its job, that, you know, maybe every five to ten years, we have to excavate that back out and probably replant it. When we excavated it out several years ago, we had the expectation that that dune grass would replenish itself. It hasn't. So it's kinda, it's not the best looking right now. We still get the migration into the parking. So it's kind of, it's not the best looking right now. We still get the migration into the parking spots, into the people's yards. Um so this is just another thing for council consideration.
In this picture, you've got the red lines that are going all over the other part of it there. Is that um, is that, would that be part of that fifty four thousand or is that a separate?
The fifty four thousand would be from the the beach house to the north. So just kind of halfway through that picture on the right hand side. The the left hand side, we're looking specifically for the flood mitigation and we still haven't decided what we're gonna do there. But we do have some money budgeted for that.
Okay.
Through the bond, capital improvement bond. So really, we're talking about the fifty four thousand to put a wall up against the parking lot and then potentially funding uh for dune grass planting between the parking lot, the upper parking lot and the lower spaces.
But you don't think that will be successful because it's that kite, the dune grass, the native dune grass has failed in that area before? Is that what I heard you say?
No, when when we, if you remember, there was a ten, twelve foot, I mean, it was a massive pile of sand there. We always dug it out to to uncover the parking spaces and the sidewalks. And eventually, we just hauled that all out and made it a straight slope from the upper parking lot to the lower sidewalk. We thought that the dune grass would replenish itself in that area and it didn't. So it's gonna have to be replanted. But I believe that in every five, eight, ten years, when that goes back up again, we're gonna have to remove it and probably just replant it. Um and that that's just part of the environment there.
Yeah, if you remember.
I think that'd be more environmentally pleasing uh to do that again. Uh I, but I really want that wall.
Yeah.
Back in the parking lot.
Jeff, you remember when we talked about that wall several years ago and city manager then recommended we put in thirty thousand dollars with the dune grass in front of where that wall would be now? And none of it is there because it got moved?
Well, most of that was planted at First Street that I recall, but I think there was some at Fifth Avenue as well.
But most of along that, no, there were thirty thousand on that beach line there by that beach house where that red line is.
Oh, right. But just through human activity, cleaning the beaches, uh getting buried in the wintertime. Um I was just updating Mr. Gamble on that. Oh, I I, there's probably a hundred sprigs of that left on both of those beaches. All of that's gone.
Yeah.
That's, that's why we think this area is more conducive because it's not really traveled, but foot traffic. Once it starts taking, it starts grabbing some sand and it'll keep growing up through it. Um we don't see the, at least the foot traffic eroding it as much, you know, so.
And and the wall by the beach house would do nothing for that water that comes up there, crack, other than maybe push it back towards the beach house?
It it would just deflect the wave action and and send it back down. You you're talking about on the left hand side there?
On the right hand side. We get a lot of water around the beach house.
We don't get any water up into there.
Not anymore?
No.
Can't you plant dune grass on both sides of the parking lot, like where that wall would be? Like dune grass there and then dune grass down, down here?
So.
I just think that dune grass would look a lot better than the wall. It it's not very aesthetically.
If it looks like First Street wall, I think.
Yeah, and you put a mural mural on the side of it. I love the one on First Street. We could do something creative over there.
That's what Councilman Bachmann was was pointing to. The beach beach master plans that were done back in a long time ago, two thousand eight. They they recommended planting the dune grass in those, in the beach proper, if you will, so west of the parking lot. And the city did that on both of the beaches and the dune grass just does not survive because of all the human, all the traffic. And then once you plant it out there, the beach cleaner can't clean it. And if it gets buried, then it gets moved around when we do all the snow fence. So um I I just don't think that's a viable solution.
So if you do the wall at Fifth Ave, and this is just a question based on comments I've heard from different people in the public. The First Street um wall seems to work well and and people like it. But I've heard from some people that if they go to the parking lot and park their car, they have a car especially, that wall might be just a little too tall that it blocks the view if they're sitting in their car to watch. Like, is there a certain height that Fifth Wall, that Fifth Ave beach wall would have to be? Or could we bring it down a little bit?
I I I've heard the same concerns. So I I think that we would want to size that wall to trap as much sand as we can, but not obstruct the view.
Okay.
Because in First Street, you got when that sand blows there, look how much sand you had to plow this summer or this, to get it, I mean, you know, that would be a big pile.
Yeah, it's still, the sand will still get past it, but it does, it does make a collection point. The other thing is, that's important is it helps people stop from driving off the edge of the pavement. And several years ago, we repaved that west edge when we were doing other construction and it's way better. But but that's another, another issue. By the way, I'd also love to repave that parking lot. Um it it's, it needs it bad.
I think if those two projects, the flood mitigation is probably more important than the sand barrier personally.
Well, and we do have some money budgeted for that already.
How much?
Yeah, I was gonna say, did he say?
That says seventy nine. I don't think we had that much for it. I think it was fifty. So we had fifty in the capital improvement bond towards the flood mitigation.
Keep in mind, there's other components besides that wall.
Right.
Hasn't been, that's not the solution without necessarily.
So we we haven't determined the final scope of that, but but Mr. Bachmann, that's already funded. So we're really talking about the potential fifty four and the ten.
Anybody else?
The next one.
Might as well stay there.
So I'll I'll talk about this too. Um this is, I believe, a um, well, I know that members of the Parks Commission support this. Um the mayor was on the Parks tour last fall and actually brought this up. But at the Lions Pavilion, we simply have a porta john. We have public restrooms right across the street at the fish cleaning station, but it's still a little bit of a stretch. And if you're right there, um I don't think anybody would disagree that it'd be wonderful to have toilets there. So um we asked Spicer to do cost estimates on that. By chance, they had just designed and, did you build it?
Uh, I think we built this spring.
So they have a project in place that basically takes those plans that are up there. Um so we were able to get a very good uh cost estimate on what that would be. Essentially, this building would be a a brick building, um and it would have two unisex restrooms and then the plumbing chase. Nothing, nothing major, nothing fancy, um but a standalone structure like that, um they estimate at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um could be higher, could be lower. Um but again, material costs are higher and um it would have to really rely on what competitive bids we could get. And then um just tying in the water and sewer costs, we estimated at fifty for that.
Can't you do just one unisex bathroom?
You could. Um it doesn't cut the cost in half though.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
I was trying, okay, okay. That was my only question.
I was thinking two hundred enough, I don't know.
Well, it's a porta potty now, I mean. Anything's a step up from that.
Would you have to run a line through to it?
Excuse me?
Some, where do you run a line to that?
Well, we have a pump station. Um it's actually on the north side of the road, right across from the fish cleaning station. So we would run a gravity line right to that. And then we've got water across the street. And then, I'm not sure exactly where it is, but we've got a service that runs into the pavilion. So we would just make a connection at one of those two points and.
So where exactly do you put it? Near the Lions Pavilion?
I I don't, I wouldn't answer that.
Okay.
A hundred percent, but my just intuition says close to where, uh probably where that porta john is now. So that it doesn't impede the views. Um it seems like that's every festival I've ever been to since when I was twenty one. All the porta johns seem to line up right there. Um so that would make sense to me. And it'd be closer to the utilities.
How would we fund that and can we afford it?
That's a lot.
I think we talked about grant opportunities for this one. It's another.
I mean, you can always try for grants, but that is a waiting game and sometimes they're, they're not very fundable. So it's a lot of effort. Sometimes you don't get them. But I mean, this could be an ARPA project. You could invest fund balance in the general fund. We don't have room in the capital improvement fund to fund this because there's other uh costs that are obligated. There's other projects. So it'd probably have to be one of those three things. Grant, ARPA, fund balance.
I guess I'd like to, I'd like to see it as a budget presentation, but compared against other projects that are potentially pending. I wouldn't want to say do this to exclude the product I haven't heard about yet, because I'm sure there's projects we haven't heard about yet that are gonna come be presented in the budget. Is that correct?
I I think that's fair for all these discussions, right? They all are gonna sound great until you put them all together. And remember when you guys had to put your your dimes and stuff around? If you run on them, if you can't fund, afford it, then you gotta prioritize.
Yeah.
I I do have, just my only concern, I I'm all in favor of putting bathrooms down. I think they're necessary. But I've heard numerous complaints at at different parks about the break-ins at the bathrooms and the plumbing being removed and things like that. Do we have, and this is just an offshoot of talking about bathrooms, um I'm very worried about how we stop that problem from happening in the future. So I just want to put that thought out there that I have that concern because I think we need to put additional security or lock or a lock system on the bathrooms. So.
Did you, did you look on the outside?
Well, I will tell you that um we, years ago, in order to try to reduce the vandalism, uh we went to having police officers lock them every night, unlock them in the morning. Um we then automated that where we went to electronic locks. So all the city bathrooms have electronic locks um and we can time when they lock and when they unlock. Um but it hasn't eliminated the vandalism because.
I've heard numerous complaints about Reese Park.
Yep, Reese Park. And one of the problems we have there is we've got some bent door closures that sometimes the electronic lock doesn't let it lock all the time. So Mark Hanson has those replacement parts on order. He's been waiting on them forever. Um but like goodies in in the Marina Building, the people that are making the trouble figure out when that thing's locked. If it's locked at nine, they're there at eight fifty five and and get in. And there's a lot of vandalism that happens during the day as well. So I think, Josh, I don't want to speak for you, but um I know Chief Glass has been pushing hard to get more surveillance cameras. And so that does, that's not gonna prevent you from doing it, but it helps us catch you and penalize you when you do. But we we spend a tremendous amount of money fixing those bathrooms.
I bet.
Um the the day that uh Manasty Beverage got broken into, the the men's bathroom at the Marina was trashed. They broke all the mirrors, they they trashed it. Um but as um we talked about before, we're doing a deep clean on that. So as they're putting it together, we just closed it and we're, Mickey and Larry are going through and uh fixing that up and.
You picked up the paint colors, ready?
So we've asked for some assistance picking out paint colors and trying to make them a little more vibrant, but um vandalism, vandalism's a real issue.
Anybody else?
I just thank you for renting that place out now and we're getting money for it. We should be offering bathrooms. I think that would.
Well, I suggested to Mr. Bradford that forty one hundred dollars a year, we just amortize it out and. We don't like that too much. But that would be a respectable way of reinvesting in that too.
I just.
Raise a rent if you had a bathroom there.
Well, I I will tell you guys that when Fifth Avenue Beach House got got rebuilt and fixed and then when First Street got rebuilt and fixed, we get so many inquiries every year about weddings. But we can't reserve the space. That's just city policy is that they're first come, first served. The Lions Pavilion is the first place that you can reserve outside and.
But you can't go to the bathroom.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
You just gotta time it to get across the street and back. But but people aren't gonna invest and bring in a hundred guests or fifty guests or two hundred guests for a whole weekend if they can't be sure that the wedding's gonna be there.
Yeah.
So, you know, that was part of personally why I supported that. But I think we, I think we need like a wedding venue. Because I think our facilities are are really nice. The setting is amazing. And I think that would generate commerce for the entire community.
It would take pressure out of the brigade if we ever get that done also.
Mm-hmm.
I just had no idea that two bathrooms are gonna cost that much money. Holy mackerel.
You gotta remodel your own lately, huh?
Apparently not.
Go ahead. Talk about the test parts?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll make him update the uh cost, but um we did, we did uh talk to a local contractor, so I don't have a bid or anything, but just asked them if we wanted to tear out what was there, um what would that cost? And they estimated that a a fair number would be twenty thousand dollars. We've been talking about this for many, many years. Um I think the condition of the courts is unsafe. Um I've talked to the school, the Manasty High School actually co-owns that park with the city of Manasty. And um they put the nets up and take them down. When I talked with the business manager at the school, I, there's been some staffing changes. So I think the nets have stayed up. Um I can tell you, when we built the storage shed um for the uh ice skating rink equipment, um I was there several days where, when the kids got out of school, they went to the teen center. And I couldn't believe how many kids went up and played tennis there, just having a blast. It was really cool to see. Um but to put them back is obviously very expensive and the costs are going up. Um and we haven't found any dedicated grant funds to support that. Um we could go through some some B and R ones. Um um the Mingor Fund may be an option, um but we would still have to commit. And and I think the school needs to to participate in that as well, honestly.
How do they, how do they feel about it? Do they want them replaced? Do they want, I mean, what are their thoughts?
I don't want to speak for them, but I can tell you um in Councilwoman Pontiac was was on the control board. So um Ms. Pontiac and I represented the city on the, on the Sands Park Control Board. And when we had discussions about that in the past, um they want four new courts. They would love to have eight courts that they own and control and make it for public use because it would be better. That's kind of the minimum to hold matches and stuff.
Yeah.
Um we, they supported us in the four court renovation down at First Street. Um and they just said, we just finished the track. We we're going through this big bond. And it, I didn't get a sense that they were willing to commit any financial today, but sometime in the future.
And also think with, if we did demo it, we talked to the Parks Commission about what, what's another option there. And I think uh the school would like to hear what the Parks Commission has to say too.
Yeah.
Is that the best place for, is that the best place in the city for courts? Or would the old track up by the high school be a good place for, they could put?
Yeah, I I know that um, I know that in my previous job, I worked with the school to try to cite community courts at the school complex. I think that's what's best for everybody. Um and they could have the space for that or could easily acquire some additional land for that space or work with the city. We've got, we've got land right next to that. I think twelve acres where our well field is that.
Well, the old track is huge.
Yeah, well, it's used as a um the football practice facility now. But but there's options. So I I think segmenting it out isn't the best option. Um I think if you put it all in one complex, that would be best. So we're, I think the first question is, do we tear it out? Right, I mean, now, in the near future? And then kind of what's council's appetite for trying to fund four new courts in the future?
Well, the replacement costs here would be to use those existing ones. But if we just built new somewhere, what would that cost?
That's in essence rebuilding up four of those courts, so.
But that's rebuilding. That's not just starting, like, I mean, it's.
It's literally starting from scratch.
Starting.
Oh, so you take them to, okay.
You completely take everything out of there and then you rebuild new. So if you did that in another location.
So just a little bit of history. Those courts were built at two different times.
Oh.
And they're different materials. But once the, once the base starts, it's just like a street. Once it starts to crack, you can fill the cracks. When you can resurface them, you can repaint them, which the city did probably fifteen years ago. Um but when the base deteriorates to a point where the cracks get so wide that you can't put a filler back in them, then you have to start over with a new base. Previously, the fence was in good enough condition. I was gonna leave the fence. But now you pointed out, it's got graffiti on it. It's really rusted. I'd hate to put, spend a couple hundred grand on new courts with a rusty fence around it. So this would just be why. So this would just be wiping it out, starting fresh. And it may actually be less money than a new site where you've got to create it out, put the drainage in, parking. So I don't think you're going to get... And can you explain what the two fifty to four hundred range is?
Well, there's, so there's baseline, just replacing the courts themselves with concrete and then the surfacing and the nets. Half the bare minimums, the fencing. And then if we were to do site work around it, sidewalks coming down the hill to tie it up to the school, bleachers, we just kind of add a lot of add-on items to it. And it's just a range because the cost on it, we, you know, there's only a hand... Tennis courts getting built every day. You gotta, you gotta go kind of look all across the state to find these cost estimates and they're changing every year. So we're a little unsure in what the range would be. This is off, we just, we're doing some down, I'm not even sure where we're at downstate. But right now, we're actively looking at bidding a set of these courts, similar size. And our estimates are in this range. And we've been talking to contractors down there. It could be completely different up there, that's why, that's why we got some variability here.
So if, if we took them out, we could, down the road, have a conversation with the school and be like, hey, we're thinking about replacing these and see if they'll pitch in and then try to find grants.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest with you, after watching those kids play, it, it would break my heart to tear them out. But it would break my heart even more if somebody got hurt on them. And those cracks have opened up so big, it's just not safe. So I think the prudent thing would be to demo them. And then work with the school and work with future funding and, and try to put them back, whether it's here or somewhere else.
So my question on that though is, because it's the school and the city, so is it a fifty-fifty split? I mean, is it an equal partnership?
That's a, that's an excellent question.
I, I mean, I guess I feel like even if we say we're going to demolition them, which I truly don't feel that's the right option. I, I'd like to see the latter, but, but I do worry about the liability. And I'll be honest, in this day and age, I, I don't think the play at your own risk is going to hold up if somebody really gets injured. So that leads me to question who's really liable if somebody gets injured on that property because of the split. But I don't feel we should take on the whole cost of that as a city, either, either option. I feel like if, if the school is a partner in that, then they need to come up with their portion of the money for that.
Yeah, and...
Seth, come on.
Well, I think you're on that committee now, so you can have that conversation.
Perfect, I have no problem having that conversation, but I'm just saying...
Well, that, that is a reality though, because we, the city pays for the utilities, that whole site. We pay for all the maintenance, we do all the grass cutting, I mean, we, we cover everything.
And, and if you were outside, somebody who did not live in this community and know that that was a partnership, you would think that that is school-owned property, based on the way the school property lies. So I feel like you can't reap all the reward if you don't want to invest in that as well. So if, if we're not getting some type of an investment, that makes me question what that partnership looks like.
So I, I, gosh, I have really mixed feelings about this. Because on one hand, we've got the, I don't know, it's not the teen center anymore, it's the whatever, rec center there. And if you took that out, that's one less thing that they have there to play and, and do. So that makes me sad. And, and then the other is, is well, who's really playing, who, you know, the middle school, high school? So why would it be there, not closer to the middle school, high school? But then that leaves the rec center without one sport to offer to kids. So it's kind of...
I feel like this is a good central location though, for the community.
True.
Like, I mean, I, I even see a lot of adults playing on those courts.
Yeah.
When they were in good condition, the adults were there every night. I mean, there were leagues that played tennis there.
And it's well lit in that area.
Yeah.
I mean, it really is, so.
It's a great location.
I wouldn't personally recommend taking it out.
You would?
I would not recommend a demo again until you had a plan to put it in. That's my view.
Then can we...
Like the liabilities?
It would look like adding that in?
Have we met with the board recently?
Uh, it's been a couple months.
The Sands?
Yeah, I would bring this up again to see what their thoughts are.
Yeah, we certainly can convene that, that board and then have that discussion and then follow up as... Because we're, we're real early in the budget process, so...
Yeah, I think we meet with the Parks Commission then February, call the Sands Board together.
And Mary, are you still on the...
No, Seth is, so...
No, I meant on the Armory, or the A E Y.
No, Jim.
Okay. So I think it would be good, just like you said, if we take away an activity, do, do they lose something? So, you know, my plan is to talk to the Parks Commission and see if they have any recommendations. But I think the, whatever it's called now, the teen center, that they need to, to weigh in on, on that too. Maybe that grass space would, could be utilized for something in the interim or even long term. But the, the Parks Commission's had the same conversation with the tennis courts at Fifth Avenue. There's a group of them that believes that, that removing those would be beneficial to the beach. I think overall, they think that it needs, that the slab should stay and it should be repurposed. Take the fencing down, it's not a good place for tennis. But maybe use that as a place to have weddings, big gatherings, you know? Maybe a seasonal tent goes up there or something like that. But just like Councilman Bachman said, they haven't brought any specific recommendation forward because got to vet out what the, what the next plan would be before we start taking away stuff, so...
So another option with this, we've spoken with the Community Foundation about Minger Grant opportunities. And this is one that we could potentially go for in the spring. It'd be a hundred thousand, you know, and then we do a hundred thousand match or a hundred fifty thousand match. So I think that this would probably be a good one for that.
We've applied before, haven't we?
We applied for this one and, and we tried to sweeten it up by saying we're going to stripe it for tennis and for pickleball. They, the Community Foundation Board had multiple requests. So they went around, kind of formed their own study group, visited locations. Ultimately, they funded pickleball in Manasty Township for their courts. And then recommended to us that we'd be better off spending less money in refurbishing the First Street Courts. And so we ended up reapplying the next year and, and received the money to refurbish First Street.
Jeff, sorry, discussing the senior senator about adding pickleball court there, either indoor or outdoor?
I have not had any conversations.
You have to know before we committed to something.
Yeah, it would be.
If you were to tear that out, what would you put, like what would the, the ground be? Would it just be dirt?
Temporarily, I think you just topsoil and seed it. But that's what I was saying, I think if, if the Alternative Youth Board weighed in on potential uses and we talked to the Parks Commission about potential uses, maybe there's some other use that...
Just wondering if you like threw up a volleyball net for them?
Yeah.
Because I mean, you don't really need...
I know where to get sand.
Yeah. Yeah, so I was just, maybe that would be something temporary until we could get financing to rehab the courts. Tear it out and put up a volleyball net, because safety wise, that would be better for them.
Yeah.
That's actually a really cool idea.
Anybody else?
Well, yeah, and that's in, that's in some, some poles and...
Yeah.
You could put probably three, four net, make a little complex there. Okay?
Okay, Veterans Memorial Park.
Pull that up.
So while they're pulling that up, I'll just jump in since I'm here. But we have, if you, just for everybody's remembrance, we put together a cost estimate, we submitted for a grant application to the DNR trust fund. We did not score high enough to receive that. We intended to reapply the next year, but our Parks master plan had expired. And they would not allow us to renew that master plan by ourselves. We had to do it countywide, so we went through and did it countywide. Made another application this year, and we believe we came real close. But we did not get funded this year. This is a, so we've had some internal discussions of, we've got some pledged money, we've got some bond money. Do we scale back the project and just fix what we can? Or do we reapply next year? We have worked very hard with some of Spicer's experts to pick apart our application and try to gain every single point that we can. I think we jumped thirty points this year, was it twenty? Thirty points, so we're up to three hundred and ten points. But what hurts us is we're not in southeast Michigan. That you get, you get penalized or you don't get points for the geography. So one of the only, and we're having a meeting on this to discuss it a little bit more in depth. But the only obvious thing that we could do that, to bump up those points would be to increase the match money we put in. I don't know if there was more points you wanted to make on that.
So had we, it was a three hundred thousand dollar grant and two hundred sixty thousand match is what we committed, using a lot of ARPA funds and some of the capital bond. But the thought is next year, we could do a fifty percent match and that would give us a few more points. The only other suggestion, we can go visit a DNR meeting and kind of pitch it to them first. And we did have our rep come out and show them the project. But I think we are very close and the market was down last year, so it's a trust fund, so when...
So they didn't fund as many projects.
Right, so I, I think if we would have been able to apply the year that our five-year master plan was, was done and we didn't have one, this would, probably would have been funded.
Yeah.
So I think, I do think, my recommendation, I think we try one more time this year and do the fifty percent match. And then if we don't get it, then we kind of look at other options, but...
Yeah, I hate to do it not as well as we want to do it and just kind of have to settle for something when we're going that far for it. I, I agree with that, I would rather try to, if we were that close.
Well, and, and the problem is that, I mean, anybody who's been down there, the, the only time the landscaping looks beautiful is in the fall when the leaves are changing. Those bushes are so overgrown, the walkways, there's trip hazards all over the place. The steps coming down next to the ban shell, I, I, somebody's going to get hurt on that. The decking on the west end is so rotted that we've had, we've had it closed for a year and a half. Because it's not like we can just put new boards on it. The under, the substructure of it is rotted and, and it has to be replaced. So this is a project that really needs to be done and we're just not quite close enough yet.
Well, and plus, aren't we going to have all that work going on where, on the bridge there? So people are going to be, it's going to be kind of a mess for a little bit anyway. So wait another year, maybe not the worst thing.
I just worry about safety period. People still want to walk down there, they want to be in the river, they're going to try to use the steps. They got to be safe enough to walk down. And, and I think just making the steps safe and cutting back all the vegetation, especially in the spring, will make it less likely for some unusual camping that I've seen on the other side of the river.
Yeah, we can, we can make that a priority. We had barricades up, they tore those down, so we, we screwed in boards to keep them, try to keep them out of there. I know Mickey's filled in some of those low spots with gravel, just on a temporary basis, so we can continue to do that.
Is that the steps going down there, Jeff, with that black line there? With the rotted out step siren?
Well, where, where you're pointing is where the decking is rotted though, yeah.
There really is a beautiful area, I'd love to see it done well and the right money.
One of the components that's, that's in the project is lighting that, which I think will be beautiful at night, but also make it a lot safer for people as well.
Anybody else? Sorry, I feel like, I'm trying to move this along, sorry.
It's been a long meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did I say that wrong? Mr. Campbell, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Pratt?
The only thing I wanted to follow up on was, I know the sidewalks with the snow pile was a concern at the last meeting. So I was kind of shocked to hear that my sidewalk might be five feet wide. So I went home and measured, my sidewalk is four feet, two inches. And I did receive numerous phone calls from citizens that have watched that video. And so far, the only person that told me their sidewalk was five feet across was somebody who lived across from the courthouse and went across the street and measured. And I think that whole stretch of sidewalk had been replaced at one point in time. So I just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Grabowski?
I got two things, I'm sorry. Keller, are you at least partially satisfied moving in the right direction? Are you happy with the things we've done today or does it not fulfill your needs? Well, the budget, making budget for the volunteers, are you happy with that resolution? Okay, great, thank you. And number two is, there's been a lot of discussion about staff changes and adding staff to the budget this year. Is it possible before you make a budget recommendation, you can bring those staff suggestions to council and tell us who's asking for staff, the consequences of the budget to that staff and the cost of that? So we can at least give you some feedback before you present us with a budget?
Yes, I can do that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And we do have, with the planning department, we have that contract with the county is actually up in October. So we're going to have to decide if we continue with that or we bring that in-house. I think Katie's done a great job, but, you know, there's some options there we need to look at. So that'll be part of it.
I'd like to be able to have an input on that before you...
Okay.
Present a manager's budget to us, it'd be great.
Absolutely, thank you.
Steve, nothing?
I just have a question on all these lovely items that we just talked about. So is this going to come back in regular session and we, like, are we going to do a work session where we vote on them again? Or what, how, what's the next process? I'd just like to understand.
So I think we're given good direction with the Manasty Proud one, the, the boat launch machine. It sounds like there's some little items we can work on about advertising, kind of getting more information out there about options. So it doesn't look like we're moving forward with replacing the machines at this point. The first Maple Street pedestrian light crossing, it sounds like council's in favor with moving forward with that. The first step's going to be the engineers giving us kind of a design. And that's going to take a little bit, so maybe we approve that design going forward. And I think that might line up with the budget. So we might have that in the next budget, maybe sooner, depending on their timeline for that. Fifth Avenue Beach Wall, Lions Bathroom, I think those two are going to be items that we provide as options in the capital improvement budget. Councilman Bachman, I think, pointed out, I think with the bathrooms, you're looking at probably doing a bathroom or a street, maybe with that amount of money. I mean, that's kind of, that's, that's just kind of where it's at with the cost of that. But then the two Sands Park, we have direction to go, I think, work with the Parks Commission, talk to the, the teen center or, and then kind of work with the Sands Control Board, come up with, and I think a Minger Grant's probably in the future for that one. And Veterans Park, we're going to apply for another grant. So that's my game plan, I appreciate everyone's feedback on that.
Anybody else? No? Okay, I have nothing, I'll take them.